We'll call each order.
Apparently, he doesn't want to be anywhere near me, but he has.
First item is a pledge.
Oh, yeah.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, next item is roll call.
Kevin Brightske.
Here.
Bob Gilianna.
Here.
Craig Kenworthy.
Here.
Pamela Michler Fish.
Here.
Ed Morales.
Here.
Redstone. Luther Williams.
Here.
Nikki Witkowski.
Here.
Rick Burns.
Here.
Eight present, you have a quorum, sir.
Thank you. Do any other correspondence at this time?
There is not.
Okay, alright. Got two cases for business, the first one is A M two zero two five dash two. Applicants Porter County Department of Development and Stormwater Management. Location one fifty-five Indian Avenue, Suite three eleven. Request seeking a recommendation for amendments of Chapter two, Chapter five, Chapter twelve of the Porter County Unified Development Ordinance to include barn dominions.
Good evening, everybody. I sent you a staff memo.
He wants to state your name, man, that's exactly.
Mike Javo, and I work.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Um, sent you a staff memo on these two agenda items tonight, the first one's the barn dominium, it is the Roman numeral two, starting on page two of the report I sent you. What precipitated all this is we've been getting a lot of inquiries lately. Barn dominions, come to find out, they're uh pretty prevalent, there's a contractor, I believe, over in either Saint Joe or La Porte County that does construct these, they have pits, or they have uh floor plans and all that, all prefabricated and all that, they construct, so. We've had one submitted and a whole bunch of inquiries on these, and as a principal, you know, we don't have an objective objection to them, as you can see, I got a little slideshow to kind of show you what we mean, but as you can see by some of these, they're quite attractive buildings. But they're also known to be quite large too, some of them can be quite large. And so I will uh go through the slideshow and kind of give you a flavor of what we're talking. Now, barn dominions, by definition, if you, we did a lot of research across the web and other counties, cities, towns, not only in Indiana, but in other states as well. As you look at these examples right here, these examples are mostly living space. They not include large shop spaces or anything, they have your typical two, three, four car garage. So there's nothing really super big about them as far as storage goes, it's all living space. Now, a lot of people think, well, it's a pole barn, a pole barn is a barn dominium, and that is false too, a barn can be of any construction material, it can be metal, it could be stone, it could be wood, it could be any of the building materials you'd see in typical housing construction. Here's an example of one that's a little bit bigger, does have a large garage space, as you can see to the right in both of these pictures, it's a very, very attractive building for the rustic scenery that it's sitting in, it's not adjacent to any other properties or anything else like that. This came out of the Newcastle, Indiana Unified Development Ordinance where they address barn dominions. Uh, this is a picture they're showing as an example of theirs, as you can see, this looks like a traditional barn, more barn. How much of this is living space versus storage space, uh I can't ascertain from the picture. Then I start looking at some barn dominions again, you can see these are mostly in a metal frame, metal frame, pre-built buildings to a certain extent. And you can see like uh to the left down at the bottom, it's got a three bay or two bay garage and some storage room in the back. And it doesn't seem out of place uh and with respect to like a normal home or anything. Here, we're getting a little bit larger, we're getting a little more institutional, but you can see they got a four bay garage there, again. Uh, houses do have, a lot of houses do have four bay garages of this size. Does that make it a barn dominium? No, it does not. Here's something where it's roughly fifty, fifty percent of storage garage space versus living space on the main footprint, or it's, it's key to point out, everything we refer to is the footprint, it may be multiple level of living quarters, we don't count the upper. We're trying to compare these things with the footprint of the ground that they consume versus the storage. But here you can see you're approaching probably more exactly fifty fifty in storage versus living space. Here's something a little bit bigger, six, about sixty-three percent of storage space, garage, whatever you want to call it versus the house. As you can see, it gets quite large, and to illustrate a point, when we have uh primary structures and that, I think that's one of the key things here, this then becomes a primary structure, we say so in the U D O, the U D O is very silent and structured. And if you all recollect, the vast majority of our planned uses, say that a residential structure as a primary structure can only thirty-five feet in height. Then we say, with the exception of the ag and a few industrial, that accessory structures are limited twenty feet in height, those of you who sat on board zoning appeal hearings or listened to it quite frequently, we are addressing that. Which is something we're going to address in the future, you know, it's twenty feet, should it be twenty-two, twenty-three feet? Research on that, because that seems to be the sweet spot, everybody's equipment, like their motor homes, their boats, and whatever they store are getting bigger than they were some twenty years ago. But as you can see here, actually, the assess what would be normally accessory structure is taller than the house. And that's one of the things, these things can be very massive in scale, especially when they're very close to other uh properties with structures. This is a case that was submitted to us this year for a permit. And as you can see in the green, that's all storage space, garage storage space, all considered the same. The blue space is the first floor of a two-story building. And it's roughly eighty, twenty in comparison inside, storage space eighty percent and living space twenty percent. And the entire thing is thirty-one, thirty-three feet tall, so they're really pushing the limits on the size of this thing. And again, we don't have objection to the barn dominium, we think there's certain offsets, we have to be respectful of our neighbors and certain sizes to maybe consider. And then this is the same one, these are the elevational views. Uh, the one to the upper left, that would be the front. The backs to the right, and then the two sides there, as you can see, the one side, in this particular case, the side in the bottom right-hand corner, that was the one that was going to be adjacent to a residential subdivision with a ranch-style home uh within thirty feet of the property line. So residential R one, they can be within twenty feet. On the other side where this was going was our, our setback is thirty feet. So uh it's hard to tell the scale and all that kind of stuff. The reason we rejected it is because of its closeness to it, and we felt that the U D O did not present itself clear enough that we could get direction, hence we made recommendations that any of these come in, if they want to move forward, that they would go to the Board of Zoning Appeals. Unless we did something ourself until such time, which is what we're here tonight for. That's pretty much my presentation, you know, to give you a flavor what they are, so a barn dominium can look like a barn. And it doesn't have mass storage like some others do, or it can be massive storage with massive heights. And so the proposed ordinance we're putting before you tonight, it's open for discussion, we can change it with your input. The staff's done a lot of research, as I said, we've reached out to various people, uh searched the web, and it's, it's interesting, there's very few standards that address this phenomenon. But what we did find, in communities we did talk to, if they were in the urban areas like a city or town, they were generally located on the fringe of the city, adjacent to agricultural land, and they did have hundred-foot setback, especially from the front. What we did find in the one county, it was Hamilton County, I believe, which is a pretty populated county, but so is Porter County, Porter County is in the top ten of counties of the ninety-two counties in Indiana, so. They're experiencing growth in their urban areas, yes, they have a lot of very dense urban areas, but they still have some rural areas. Um, they also were looking at the hundred-foot setback as well, and that they uh they didn't go so far as talk about what they'd be adjacent to, oh, yes, they did. They said they were mostly in the agricultural and the low uh low-density residential. Now, mind you, they did not have an R R classification like we do for residential. So I would consider our very lowest rural residence would be rural residential, so that would provide some similarity, and it wasn't just them, it was another town in Indiana that did the same thing. So the information is scant when you do find it, so it doesn't go into great detail, we could get into architecture, we could get into a whole host of things. But I didn't think that was the purview, we don't, like I said, we don't want to discourage this kind of development, we just want to make sure that either the size of it is not so massive to disrupt the adjacent land uses. And that uh on the other hand, we don't want to pick out, because they got a four-car garage, that doesn't make it a barn dominium, so when you read the draft ordinance, it says, I believe it says if at least fifty percent of the storage space of the foot, the overall footprint, that would kick it into what we would define as a barn dominium, doesn't mean they can't do it, it just says now you've got a definition of what you are. Later on in the document, I don't have it immediately, I got it right here. But I believe is, we didn't, we suggested that they not be more than seventy percent of storage space. And we did ran some numbers, you know, like I said, four-car, three-car garages were real popular, now four-car garages are starting to become popular. So we just didn't want a regular house to be held back because of this. So we tried to use some care and do our due diligence to make sure to do that. Thing to keep in mind, as far as the offsets, we said a hundred foot, that'd be the side, rear and front. Except if it was adjacent to uh any non-agricultural land or R R. So in other words, if it was next to R one, which is a little more dense housing, still considered low, but it's not the uh R R. We said two hundred feet, now, we just guessed at that one, we felt that, you know, that, that could be modified, we've had second thoughts about that since we published this document, but we'd be well entertained, but that would only be on the adjacent side, it's not meant to be all setbacks. So if only on one side, they're close to, say, an R one or an R two zoning. That would be the only side they would have, what we would recommend be a higher setback distance to give a little, because if and you're in the building business as well, what I learned in my career is, is the farther away you are from something, the shorter it looks. And so we're trying to find that sweet spot so that the height-distance ratio provides that kind of optic of what we're looking for here. So I will stop talking and entertain your thoughts.
Thanks. Luther? Comments?
Um. I'm trying to find it here, you gave examples, the pictures, can we, can you put those flash through them real quick of the examples?
Sure, be happy to.
Yeah. Yeah. Go, the next one, the next one. Okay, give me the ones that show the percentages. I think, you know, a lot of these, maybe they're fifty fifty?
That one, that one in front of you is not, so that wouldn't be classified necessarily as a barn dominium. I would say fifty fifty would start looking like that Luther.
Okay.
And then definitely that one would be greater than fifty percent.
Okay, but now, in what you had here, what are you suggesting that the ratio be?
Well, in the front, the fifty percent just says that's the definition of a barn dominium, because when we do this, we have to define what a barn dominium is, if you, let me pull it out, I'll read it to you. So it's just simply the definition, it says a barn dominium is a large structure that's a home built to resemble a barn, converted from a barn, often with steel metal frame or even more conventional facade material, and characterized by open floor plan, high ceilings with large non-residential utility space that may be used as shop or storage area. The attached non-residential space of the structure is greater than fifty percent than the total structural footprint. So all we're saying by the fifty percent, if it exceeds fifty, fifty percent or greater, it could fall into the barn category. Now, the only limitations, other than the setbacks, we have the lot size, the minimum lot width and the height. And we're saying that the maximum primary structure, to answer your question, is whatever that zoning they're in, that still pervails. And then the distribution, uh we put in as a suggestion that the storage space couldn't exceed seventy-five percent of the total footprint. So in other words, we didn't want to have a five thousand square foot barn, and then you put a little pumed little house just to get the credit for having a big barn of that size.
So are we saying that the barn dominium can have a height of what?
Whatever the height limitation is for that zoning requirement, so in R one, R R, the maximum height is thirty-five feet.
Okay.
For any house.
Okay.
And that would apply to the barn dominium.
Okay, but what about in uh the ag district?
I'd have to look that up, ag's a little unique in that it, and I don't have it right in front of me unless you know right off the top of your head, I can look it up real quick. But ag's got a little different twist to it, because there's what's called an exemption for being agricultural, you can go up to fifty feet if you can prove you're truly an agricultural use.
So, so that's what I'm saying, can they be fifty feet tall?
They would in that case, yes.
In a, the barn dominium?
Yes.
Okay, that, that was my question.
Okay.
Anything else Luther?
Done.
Kevin?
Yeah, the big question in my mind was the height, I like the idea of having the setbacks that you recommend just for proportion, something to keep in mind, typically the barn dominium, they say it can be built for twenty to forty dollars a square foot, as opposed to traditional home, that's about two hundred dollars a square foot. And that's mostly because of all the space they use uh or create, uh most of these seem to be metal buildings at this point, but they don't have to be. And there, there's some efficiencies and economics involved with these things, but at the same time, and I mentioned to Mike earlier today, the issue with a lot of residents would be one of aesthetics, because if you have a steel building, what does that look like? It's not necessarily going to look like the pictures we see here, but uh as many of you will recall, we've had uh storage buildings dressed up because of the impact of the aesthetic on the local neighborhood or community. So that's the thing, we just need to be mindful of, and part of that was because of lack of that building line or separation from the adjoining properties. So part of this could be satisfied, I think, by having the hundred-foot side and front and rear setbacks to keep it clear. The uh what wasn't clear to me is what we're going to define, or what you recommended to define the barn dominium as, is it a building that has twenty-five percent residential use? And up to some, you know, is there a proportion there?
If uh we toyed with that, and if you read the ordinance on the first page, the definition that says that the storage area is at least fifty percent of the total footprint, so that would mean that uh the residential portion is forty-nine percent or less. That would qualify then as a barn dominium.
Okay, I missed that when I was reading.
It's at the bottom of the first page.
Maybe the second one.
Well, I'm looking at it on my phone since I didn't get a paper copy, so I just know where it is on my phone, right here, look on this, where is this?
Okay, this is on the ordinance before you go to that.
Yep, flip. Here.
Next, yeah, there it is, okay. The structure that was greater than fifty percent of the total structural footprint is considered to be a barn dominium. Okay, and I don't have any recommendations or preferences for that number as long as it's stated, so we define clearly what a barn dominium is. And by the way, these come in all sorts of other names too, and I don't hope we're going to cover the grudge, uh garage dominions, the, what are they called, the sheds?
Shouses.
Shouses, shed house, house?
That's what they're called.
So we have all sorts of varieties of these things also. Uh, that may have to be addressed in some fashion.
I want to add one thing for all you members. This is not, we're not suggest, we're suggesting that in the A one, A two and R R zoning districts, that these now become special exception uses. And for those of you who've been on here for a long time, a special exception use must appear before the B C A, to be vetted. We gave them a, not all special exception uses that are listed in there have criteria. However, we decided to list the criteria that you see on the following pages. That if they basically check all those boxes, then the chances are that they're going to be approved. They'll have to maybe settle some questions as far as aesthetics and things like that, so that's how it's currently set up here. Now, if someone wanted to build a barn dominium on another piece of property than what we say here, they still have that avenue open to them, and we deal with it all the time. We thought about that, saying, are you putting too much restriction on them, well, we're not, because everybody's got relief from the B C A, they can go to B C A and make their case, and it can be judged upon, look, since I've been here a year and a half, and what I've built before, not every piece of property is suitable to put anything you want to build. And we're not trying to do that, but when those come, we can't write rules for everything, because the more rules you write, the more loopholes you create usually, we're trying to keep it simple. But the people still have the opportunity to go to the B C A and make their case, even if they wanted to put it in R, let's say they're on R one that's forty acres, and they wanted to put it out in the middle of it. I think that would be a reasonable request that the B C A can act for, but to, but to just say it can be in any R one, then that means you can go in any residential subdivision that's a developed subdivision within R one and build a barn dominium, barn dominium within twenty feet of the property line, I don't, somehow I'm having problems with that.
Well, I, I agree with you on page two or three, you do address the special exception, which I like that part of, of it. Part of the thing that I, I'm still trying to uh get a grab, grip on too. Historically, I mean, way beyond our time, we had mother-in-law houses and other buildings built on. Today, by our own ordinances, we restrict the uh property to one residential unit, this is going to be the one singular residential.
All that would still apply, yes, as a residential unit.
And just as long as that was clear, because pretty much the impacts on community and neighbors, something we have to be considerate ahead of them.
And that's really all we're trying to accomplish here is being, if you read the U D O, chapter one, the U D O responsibility is to create harmony amongst adjacent property uses. And sometimes the U D O is silent and all that stuff, so that's why we have the plan commission, that's why we have the B C A to settle those kinds of things where we're silent or it's not clear. And that's how we're trying to set this up.
And you do have a minimum acreage recommended for, that's five acres if I recall.
Correct, for R R.
So.
Agricultural's got to be ten to begin with.
Yeah.
That's on call, Nikki?
So, I'm going to say, start off, I have a hard concept of figuring out how this is different sometimes than a house.
Hmm.
Like literally, because when I look at even these photos, my house has a metal roof. These sides, I'd have trouble arguing, are they metal or are they wood, and I've already seen houses on that side. So I don't have a lot to say on like what you're trying to do besides, aren't they just a big house or a house with a big garage? And is that more of the route we should almost be going, would be almost my thing? So that's why I'm saying I'm not going to comment a lot on what you've said, because the only other thing that I have a concern with is, I get it though, I get why they're calling them barn dominions, I get it's a style, but we've got ranch, we've got all kinds of styles of houses already. My main concern is, is somebody going to build this, convert it to look like a house afterwards? That's my greater concern is, okay, the first owner's going to do this, what stops that owner from having that seventy-five percent storage space? And whittling that away? And when are we going to hit the point that that storage space is now twenty-five percent in house and seventy-five percent?
Then they're golden, then they're just a typical residential structure.
Then why are we doing different categories for them?
Well.
It's, and, and I'm just, I'm just kind of, and I get it, but that's like the concern I have almost for, because just like you also said, what about the, what you call garage adoriums or whatever? I don't know.
Garage dominium.
Garage dominions, you know, and does it, are we already starting to go down that road of making lots and lots and lots and lots? When it's out there, I am okay with what is being proposed, I will say that as well, but that's my concern, is somebody either adding on their current house and making it a barn dominium by accident and by what they are choosing to put on the tides of their houses. Because again, like I said, how many people are now already putting metal roofs on? And how many are already getting their sides of their houses to be metal, and that's part of what you got, how many people are adding on, and that's my only thing of wrapping it around that I have trouble with all this is I think it's still also going to be, yeah, hard.
We did, and.
Oh, he was off.
I think the key to keep in mind is that I almost prefer we didn't use the word barn dominium. Because it's not about the metal roof, it's not about the site, it's not about whether it's foundation or what's the issue simply that we're doing, now, barn dominions have brought it to light, but what simply we're doing is saying, if you're building a residential home and the first floor footprint exceeds fifty percent of storage, we have created a category, and you are now in this new category, and you have to follow these rules because um we are basically stating, we are now concerned that over fifty, you are getting more, you're something beyond residential at fifty fifty.
And see, that I can get behind, and that I can stand.
So that is the only division here, we could call this super big houses, whatever, we could come up with a new name, I don't want us to get caught up barn dominium.
Really large attached.
Because we're not dealing with the foundational requirements, the roof, how that things are happening, we're not diving into the construction. We are making the divide, I think, quite cleverly at what is interiorly happening inside and kind of coming to a determination that if the fifty percent storage, which is not the residential purpose, which isn't what we're supposed to be doing primarily, this is the primary structure for a reason. If that primary structure square foot on the first floor tilts past, it being fifty percent or more residential use, we are now in this category, because you're going to be much bigger, you look different, and we think these side, you know, these setbacks are what's going to make it work. Whether it's a limestone home or a brick home or whatever, however it's built, if you are fifty percent larger storage, taking away from the primary residential use, you are put in this category because we, we're obviously determining that we're concerned about the property owners' rights, and to dovetail back in to what the director stated, this probably won't be perfect the first time we pass it, and as we run through it, we will be able to determine whether or not the hundred, you know, the hundred-foot setbacks are a little too much, they aren't enough, and we will be able to get that through some B C A cases, I think Mike had a great example. We've been going through, I think uh Mr. Burns can attest to this, at one point in time, we looked at accessory structure heights under a different kind of idea, and we were getting different requests. Now we're getting to them, and they are for a different reason, and they have to do with the size of most homes, it's always a piece like that. Now we're getting to them, and they are for a different reason, and they have to do with the size of most homes, it's always a piece like that. And so now we need to go back and look at that code, and maybe we don't need to have seven B Z A hearing officers among meetings. Maybe we need two, because we need to adjust the code of it, and we can do it out here.
Yeah, and I, and I get that, and, and like I said, I think it goes back to that definition, because, yeah, if we read it, it says, converted from a barn, with steel, no frame, but open floor plan, high ceilings, I've got that in my house.
Well.
But you're right, it's that fifty percent.
Yes.
And that's why I'm like, that's why I'm kinda going back to that, is that that seems like the tilt factor, and I just wanna also make sure that when they start going back and forth across that line, I'm assuming, assuming, but you never wanna assume, I'm assuming the different regulations can come into play or not. Cause again, I could tilt that fifty percent by adding on to my house and putting more, uh, accessory, and then I tilt it that way, or I can take that accessory space and make it a home. So that's why I'm saying, I just wanna make sure that at least is being thought about in the long run, of how are we compensating for that just as much? Because I, I agree with that fifty percent, that I'm solid on. It's just some of the other aspects, I get it, and I can see it, but like I said, when I look at some homes nowadays, your things are already in them, metal roofs, site changing, but yeah.
And if I might address that, Scott, like you're, look, where you're looking there? Those would not be barn dominions.
Okay.
Because they don't have fifty percent or grading. So, let's not get hung up on the aesthetic, whether it's metal or even looks like a barn, as long as it's livable space, that matters not to us, this, this does not change this. It's, the trigger is, like you said again.
The fifty percent.
If it's over fifty percent, all we're saying is, you have other criteria that you must satisfy, you gotta go to the B Z A.
And if somebody is, um, wanting to add on to their house, will that trigger, like if you're, if you're wanting to add on, add on a large?
I think we'd have to do them on a case, and that's where you can't get caught up. You gotta try to make this as simple and as deft as possible. If that case comes, we can work with them on a case by case. Let's say you've got a house, and you wanna go from four car garage, six car garage, and it's all really part of the house, if it makes sense and all that. Then we judge on it on a case by case basis.
But that would come before somebody later, or would that come?
When they did their building permit, yes.
I'm sorry.
When they would do their building permit add on, it could be addressed then.
Okay. Like I said, that, that's all, making sure of is that there's some other cross-check later.
Uh, thank you. I, I did think of one more thing that, and I, uh, Scott just brought it up. As far as storage, that's how I always interpreted, this was for people storing things, but what about people who have the inclination to start running businesses out of this?
That's what I was thinking.
Okay.
The underlying zoning is a change, we're not changing these.
Okay, but we need to make clear to the public what this really is. And to me, I agree with you that storage, residential use, that's the limit. But I can see people deciding that they're gonna run a.
Well, that's why it's in the residential zone, yes.
Well, an A, well, it's an A two.
But anybody that's running a business, uh, if they do it, they don't come in and do a permit, we won't know, except if the assessor finds out, or we get a complaint, or they're gonna build the thing in the first place, we look, look at it. Uh, there's people, yeah. My view is, you could have a residential house, an accessory structure out there, and a person could be running a business. You and I had that discussion a couple of weeks ago. And until someone turns it in, we don't know, then we deal with it. So, whether it's a barn dominium, or it's just typical residential house plus an accessory structure, what's to keep someone from running a business? Eventually, it'll catch up with them, if they're not allowed in that zoning.
The thing is, I, I'm just suggesting maybe in the text somewhere, it should say, this is for storage and residential purposes. And give direction for using it for a business or a commercial.
I was just gonna make a comment up there also, I know it's some of the B Z A here. Um, when you approve them, they have to actually sign a document stating that they will not use that storage facility for, like if they're building a whole barn or whatever, for a business. So, if, if somebody's gonna build one of these structures, can you also recommend, or not recommend, but, but make them sign a document stipulating that they are not gonna use this in any way, shape, or form for a business? I, I don't know if that.
It's the pleasure of the board, if that's what you want to put in as a condition.
I could just see down the road, I mean, maybe, maybe the original people that, that build these structures would say they go to sell it, and they sell it to somebody else, and they're thinking, oh wow, look, look at what we have here. We could do this, and this, and this, and it could be a totally different situation, um, than what it originally started out in. So, I would say, do what, what you do at a lot of the, the B Z A hearings, and just say, okay, you can do this, uh, you have to sign a document that you will no way, shape, or form use this as a business, or allow other individuals to store things on the property.
But I think you need to tag on that though, just as a clarifying point, or somehow making sure, it would be legit for a farmer and one A.
Because that use is allowed in A.
Right, but that's what I'm saying. But again, barn dominions could be in A, or.
A one A.
Ag land, so therefore, an ag land one, you can't have that if it's for farming purpose. And notice how I said that, if it's for a, for a farming purpose.
And there's pretty, and there's already exemptions built into the U D O for the ag industry.
Well then, any of these structures on farmland, it doesn't have that. Or it has to have a stipulation, but the exception could be for, for farm storage.
I think that's a good idea for the rural residential, that's very good.
I could just see all kinds of businesses popping up, people think, wow, I can build this, I can see all the things that.
And you know what? And they can do that, they just gotta come in and do it through the proper channel.
Right.
It's not say you can't, you're prohibited, you gotta dot more I's and cross more T's.
That, that's it for me.
Um, actually, I, after seeing that large house and thirty foot against the setback, I understand the hundred foot. I, I get that, I, I, I agree, and I like the fifty, fifty percent. I think that's your breakage, you gotta have something there. The only thing, you know, Pam brought up, the business thing, and I, how do we tell somebody, again, there, there's so many at-home businesses that people run on the end of that town. Can we actually make somebody stop doing that? I mean, what, there's a, there's in-home businesses, and then there's excavation businesses, lawn care business, you know what I'm saying? There's so many different hooks of business. How do you tell somebody, you can't have a business, and I buy it and after, you can't have a business? Whenever, when they've got an internet business, or, you know, they're running some, you know, they're working from home.
Piano lesson.
That, that gets really muddy to me. I mean, and, and to me, our zoning should take care of whether, if they're doing something incorrect out there, like Mike and I had a chat about, then our zoning law should take care of that. We shouldn't be, I don't think we should be adding to this unless we do it to every residential property.
Well.
That's my.
It's your pleasure, what you wanna add, and I think we have s- guardrails, safeguards. Maybe we're not right on top of it maybe, but eventually, if someone's running a business, their neighbors are gonna speak up, and we can, we have mechanisms to deal with. I think that's, again, as I said before, the more rules you're writing, the things, sometimes you create more loopholes, because people are gonna take advantage of it. You keep it real plain and simple, and we already got a mechanism in which we can deal with that as they occur. And I'll defer to the county attorney from a legal perspective, but that's my opinion.
Is it that, Bob?
I have nothing, I'm, I'm fine with it.
Commissioner?
Um, I'm, yeah, I'm good with it, I mean, I, the aesthetics was a question, but with the hundred foot setback, I've, that's a hu- hundred percent fine. I think it's a good draft, it's a good, it's a good first start. You know, will it be perfect? How many things could you add to it? I mean, you could make it a hundred fifty million pages, I mean, but I think it's a good first step, you know, to address this, because they are being questioned. There are people that do have questions of what they're gonna look like, especially if they're putting in, you know, a residential area, you know, rural residential. So, I think this is a good first, I think everybody's answered a lot of the questions that I was gonna bring up, so, I, I'm, I'm good with the first.
Okay, thank you.
First part of this.
Thank you. Yeah, I'm good, yeah, I, it's a goo- it's a good start, no doubt about it. I like the fifty fifty percent, I, I don't think she goes over fifty, that's just my opinion, with fifty fifty. But I do have a question, a couple of questions, um, I'm talking, buil- the building spec, uh, Mike, safety, these stone buildings, they've taller, if you want to come up. Is there a safe issue if they get fifty feet, forty feet, fifty feet, these metal buildings? Are they approved against the height winds, or, or is there a concern?
Well, that comes up a lot, we, most of the fun, let's start with. I'm Mike Hallen, I'm the Porter County Building Commissioner. Um, most of the inquiries we get are people interested in the style or the construction of the building, rather than the use of the building. So, you know, they're thinking, I'm gonna build cheaper than.
Cheap, right.
And my standard answer to them is, it doesn't matter what you build it out of, as long as it meets the Indiana State Building Code. And they all do typically, and those are actually very fancy buildings. And a lot of the companies like Nomar and, uh, Cleary and, uh, F D I, you know, they, they have products like that. They have entire calendars full of different designs of houses. They're typically not fifty percent garage, but, uh, uh, you know, they're very nice, and very safe. I mean, they're perfectly normal.
I understand some of these have dirt floors. Can, or can they have dirt floors?
A residential?
Yeah, for fifty fifty, the fifty percent that's stored, could it be dirt floor?
Yes, it can. I would also add that the storage portion of the building has to have a modicum of protection between, you know, the vehicle storage and the flammable, that sort of thing, and the residential part. Nothing to do with what the foundation of the house is like, or anything like that. Same rules apply to everything.
Same.
If you've got cars in there, you gotta try wall.
Yeah, for the fire system, okay, safety.
I would say, in regards to the business operating thing, nine times out of ten, the guy who's gonna run a business is gonna build a separate structure, and he's gonna put a separate electrical meter on it. It would be unusual to find somebody building something like that, and then running their car repair business out of there. They usually prefer to set those aside and do a separate structure. I probably know of one that's actually attached to the house, and the rest are all separate.
Thank you.
Uh, for reference, I was thinking of things while I was sitting back there. There's a house up on five hundred North and Froberg Road. Uh, is that Froberg or Ransome, that's Froberg that goes north and south.
Yes.
Yeah, I never can remember, I think I have one here. And there is a barn the size of the house, sitting there right up next to the road. You know, it's in the front yard, it follows all the rules, you know, whatever, but giving you an idea of what fifty fifty looks like. It's right there, if you go drive past it, you'll see, that is probably the worst case scenario. And then there are others that are fifty fifty, but they're cuter. You know, they, they're designed to be that way.
Did you have your hand up?
The dirt floor portion, is one of the original renditions of this, was that it was living quarters and animal.
That's what I was.
Okay.
So these originated out west, so the dirt floor portion would be, cause your horses are in.
Okay.
Because these are out west, too cold to go outside, don't want the freezing problem. Leave your house, go into your animal barn, and come back in your house, all under one roof. That's why that storage part is dirt, that's that implication, it's animals.
What we do, about, how about art orange, we go ahead?
If it would be under a one, again, I'm not worried about defining storage, I don't have to.
Okay.
Are you fifty percent or more residential house?
Okay.
I, if you're over here, you got ten percent storage.
Yeah.
You got forty-two percent storage, okay? How much house you got? The moment you click over, now you're in a different definition, now you're in some different rules.
Okay.
One thing I wanna ask, it wasn't because we received comment from the public on our advertisement in the paper or anything, amongst staff and all. I mentioned it early on. Thing maybe we do want to tune and make clear was brought to my attention is that increase from a hundred feet to whatever that is, which I'll address, that only is triggered immediately adjacent, in other words, it's not all sides then. So in other words, you're a hundred feet front, a hundred feet side, a hundred feet back, except when you're next to our one. We said, now those go to two hundred feet. It's not meant to be, and we may have to clarify that as it approaches the commissioners, if you guys wanna include that in your motion. I think we need to clarify that, so it's absolutely clear, it's only on this side adjacent to that other zoning. If it's next to another R R or another ag, the hundred applies. Second, if that trigger is met, we just came up with the two hundred feet, it could be a hundred fifty feet, it could be a hundred twenty-five. That's something else that we wanted to discuss with you too, if you wanted to make a condition to that, we're open to suggestion on that.
Okay.
I guess my question would be, if you, if we leave it at a hundred, hundred, two hundred, whatever those numbers are, if somebody came in with something different, they could go to B Z A for a period?
That is correct.
So, if we, we set a standard beyond that, you know, B Z A can, I, I, I mean, not kicking down the road, but they can look at it and say, no, absolutely not, that's nuts. I say, you know what, you got trees by it, okay, we can come back and go for it.
And if it, as Scott said, if it becomes a common occurrence, then we would come before you and maybe revise this again.
My, my only suggestion on this, staying there, would be, you wanna keep them that, that whatever in our mind the thing's going to work, you don't wanna make it too big, because we're sitting in B Z A, only five people here, and there's seven people in the, in the audience. Sometimes, because only one member is here, goes to the B Z A. The B Z A starts to feel like, for example, if two hundred feet is what we're gonna be comfortable with, for example, let's say for an ice, and we made three hundred feet, it's, every foot is part of the B Z A breakdown. So, I guess it's a long way of saying, don't make it too big, because it does make it more difficult for those cases we haven't seen yet, that we may like. But make it big enough, and we can change it. It's just, the larger they become, the more difficult it is for the B Z A to ratchet it down, that, that's all.
I, I would suggest that we stick with the recommendation of staff, because if it does become an issue, and if you have three or four cases, that becomes more contentious, we can amend the ordinance and reduce those sizes.
You do want a motion, Scott?
Uh, you got a question?
No, sir.
Uh, yeah, uh, the attorney brought up, uh, the fact about, uh, having animals in this area, and that's something that really we didn't address. Would anything be, do we need to do anything different about keeping, say, say that the person was raising horses, and they wanted to have, you know, eight horses in their storage area? Uh, is there anything that needs to be addressed to, about concerning that? I mean, is that something we want, we don't want? I don't know, I would think there's people that would like to have, be able to have eight horses.
I think other code sections have done, I think that Mike was gonna say, we have the special exceptions for the size of the stable, and those would still apply. So if you're, that, that's about a number of horses. So, if you clicked over bigger than fifty percent, you're in this new barn dominium category. If you're over a certain amount of horses, depending on the amount of horses, it depends on which special exception you're requesting, and which zoning allows for those.
But you would, but, but what you're saying is, there could be horses there, they could elect.
But there's also a, what he's saying also, there's this, not only would there be a special exception for a barn dominium, there's a special exception use to have the horses to begin with. We just did a case last winter about that.
When they're over a certain amount, I think it was.
But they put living quarters in that one, and the B Z A had to rule on that.
Right.
So, my, my recommendation is, allow staff to clarify the adjacencies, if you're agreeable to that, if you make that in your motion as a condition.
So, do you want motion, Scott, you wanna come back, or?
It's up to your pleasure.
Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Okay. Motion for what?
Uh, to adopt this as recommended by Snap.
Point of order though, is.
It's, yeah. A favorable recommendation.
Okay.
But a point, point of order, did Scott, this requires a public hearing?
Oh, yes, we have a public hearing.
Three, okay.
So before we make a motion, we have to open the public here.
Okay.
I did, I left my sheet over there.
You wanna open a public hearing now? Okay, all right, like open a public hearing, you might have, any comments positive?
Signing?
Saying none, you might have comments or questions? Saying none, if I have comments or questions or against or opposed. Saying none, close the public hall. Okay, one makes your motion.
Thanks, I'm sorry. I make a motion to, to commissioners with a favorable recommendation.
May I suggest with the condition to clarify the adjacencies to.
Right. Okay, you got it.
All right.
Do we have a second?
You get a second from me on the condition that the first agrees with the clarification.
All right, we have.
You want, you want.
First degree with the clarification.
Yes.
Thank you. Yeah, that's what I was asking for.
You want voice vote or?
Voice or ballot?
Yeah. Okay, thank you. All those are favors, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. It's passed.
Thank you.
Okay.
All right, the second item, hopefully this will go quicker. Um, we had, uh, well, no, the barn dominium is pretty heavy stuff and I really appreciate your feedback, it's really urging.
Good job, work.
A second item on the agenda was packaged as the two things and what, what staff is running into problems with or things that it administrative approval ways, we're having a lot of people on residential properties and others, they're, uh, there's a, in five oh six, chapter five, section five oh six, and it's talking about accessory structure. There's an exemption for the maximum number of accessory structures. Now it's a two-part question. If you've got so many acres of this, so many acres of this that has different number of structures or areas. And one, it's the structures, the total number of structures, like if you've got a one acre parcel, you can only have one structure, let's say, or two structures. And then part B to that is in one acre from that, then it's thirteen hundred square feet is the maximum number of. So no matter how many structures you got, you can't exceed thirteen hundred in accessory structure. So what we're having is, is we're having a lot of people coming in and they're claiming agricultural use. As I said in my memo, there, we've heard things like they're, they want to plant an orchard, they want to have a larger than average garden, or they want to do some kind of, it's pretty obvious to us that the, the use of what they're doing, the barn they're gonna build or the accessory structure far exceeds that, I mean, according to the, uh, the, the second part to that is the agriculture exception, which is, uh, the barn height. So we're gonna withdraw our recommendation for section five oh six, as I said in the memo. Uh, staff wants to take a look at that, I think there's other ways we can handle that a little more deftly, but in theory, you could live in a residential subdivision of one acre and you're limited thirteen hundred square feet. And you could put seventeen chicken coops at seventy-five square feet and be within code, just to kind of give you an illustration. Now, nobody would do that. But I think what's happening here in general, people are using the agricultural use clause. I think a little too liberally and that's why we said we only want to do it certain because the true agricultural people in the A one and A two districts, we do not want to impede the farmer or anything else like that. Now we do realize there's some farms that aren't on A one, A two, they could be on RR or R one. But again, we got the BZA to fall back on and we can deal with that, I think that's a reasonable crest, so we're dropping the thing on the number of structures, we may come back to you with something else. However, the barn height in section, um, chapter five, section five dot twenty dot C dash three, it provides, uh, an exception. And if you can say you've got an agricultural use, you can go up to fifty feet tall on any zoning classification, R one, R two, R three, all the way up and down the line. So in the past, what they've done is to prove it, they get like a USDA number, well, there's various USDA numbers, some of them, they don't even come out and check what you're doing, you just make an application, they give you a number, you got a number aside and people are coming in with that piece of paper and saying, we got this. And it's, it's not so much we want to penalize people from doing that, what we want is consistency. And without any general guidance or better guidance on that, it's hard to be consistent as time goes on. So what we're proposing is that we remove the exception for all but the A one and A two. So in other words, the farmer can still come in and, and claim an agricultural exception and get a barn if he or she feels necessary to go to fifty feet. On RR, R one and all the other ones, they would not be able to do that. Then again, just like the barn dominium, if they happen to be in that unique circumstance that they own forty acres that's zoned R one and they wanted to do some kind of operation there that was truly agricultural, they could come before the BZA and make their case. The problem is, is we are, as we all know, we're going from pure agrarian community to more residential. Someone told me, and I don't know if this is true or not, but they said we got X hundred of residential subdivisions in uncorporated Porter County. Which seems like a lot, and I think it is. And it just shows how we're kind of molding, but farming is, I, I saw a stat in, in the comp plan that we were doing, they said fifty-three percent of our ground is still agricultural, considered agricultural land, which is still pretty good size. So what we're trying, really trying to do here is get consistency so we can approve these at administrative level. If we can't do it based on these definitions, then we've got the BZA to fall back on. And that's all we're asking for here is to remove the exception for all zoning except A one and A two.
Mike, I'm for that, but for more clarity, all of Jackson Township is rural residential. In spite of the fact, my family farm is around Jackson Township. And there's still a lot of farms, including.
Well, Keith Myers wanted.
Dairy farm, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, he's just one of many farming there, but, uh, it was all rural residential, that amazes people because all the farms and the agricultural uses of the land. So there's a big difference between agricultural zoning, agricultural use. And we see it in our other townships as well. So that kind of creates a problem for our planning enforcement. What is the use, what is the zoning? The other thing is USDA numbers, people go out and get those and make claims with our assessor, come on, understand. Mike and I talked to our assessor today earlier about that. And it frustrates them because, uh, people think they will get special consideration just by getting the USDA number. They're not clearly an A business.
I'll take any questions, yeah.
What do you? Motion for this?
I'll make the motion.
A second? If they would break, your motion would fail. Motion's approved, Kevin?
I'll second that.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. A pass.
Thank you very much. We have no other business, sir.
Anybody has any, any questions? God, Keith, we're good? Do we have motions?
Some are.
Second, Senator?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor to adjourn?
Aye.
Okay, please adjourn, thank you.
My man.
Good job.
Thank you.
We, makes a lot of sense.
There's a lot of work put into all of this.
Well, I had, uh, our staff members, Kurt Houston, and he put a lot of effort in. And sta, other staff. By one year over, huh?
They cut off the side?
I, I never thought somebody would ever, I mean.
Eight by two.
I guess the common sense was right out the door with that one.
Well, see.
Which was that?
That big one he showed.
Oh, it's huge.
Now, this wouldn't be a barn dominium.
No, those aren't.
No, they're not, by our definition.
That was the thing is I, I was concerned about what, what clicks.
What clicks them is that.